Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting for village council for Monday, March 4th, 2024. Judy, if you could please call her up.
Yes, Stokes.
I am here.
DeBora Leonard.
Here.
Howsh.
I'm here.
I am.
Here.
Trish Gusterson is unable to be present due to family matters and is there a motion to excuse her?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you much.
And also present are village manager Johnny Burns, planning zoning administrator Meg Leatherman, village solicitor Amy Blankenship, police chief.
Birch.
Is anyone? If I don't write it down, Penny, a pig, that's right.
And we don't give Denise Winger any special recognition anymore, right? Okay.
She left.
Yes, we do.
Denise tried to leave, but she's always here, so we.
Oh, Penny.
All right. Thanks everyone for your attendance and thank you Judy for your efforts. Appreciate that. All right, it looks like we've got a swearing in. I think Mayor Pam is gonna.
Indeed, we do.
Yes. And I'm gonna just, Pam, I'm gonna give you, this is a village council lapel pin.
Yes.
That I'm gonna ask you to hand to Johnny and just hold it over his hand and say, when you wear a sport coat, we'll give this to you.
It looks very nice on him.
Yeah, he's still got a lapel. He's got lapels.
All right. We do this for the folks at home so they can see it, so it becomes a matter of public record. So sir, if you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States and the state of Ohio.
Of the United States and of the state of Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects.
And I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the villages of Yellow Springs.
Of the village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village manager.
And the office of village manager.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, thank you for everyone who participated in that. Is that all the swearing in? That's all that's on the agenda, but nothing else snuck up on me. Okay. All righty. Looks like it's time for announcements. Looking to my left and right, I see Brian.
Yeah, I've got a few things I want to mention. First of all, I guess one thing we should decide is if we are interested in a report out from village cafe, Lynn Kramer has indicated that he's available for the March 18th meeting. So that's something we'd all like to have. I think there was some good feedback there and that would be a part of the presentation, I think.
Okay. Got that, Judy? Yep, thanks.
I wanted to mention that, and actually, I guess this is just a brief discussion, but the family rentals roundtable is happening tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. So I know Carmen cannot make it. Emily would like, you know, if there were two council members to be there, to be involved, it's a great list. I can attend. I don't know if Kevin or Gavin, you are planning to attend?
I wasn't planning to attend. I was gonna defer to Home Inc. and staff for the leadership of that effort. I support anyone who would want to go, but I decided I would wait and get a report out.
Okay. So I think I will attend and then Gavin, you're raising your eyebrows, so I.
No, I'm kinda in the same boat as Kevin. And Carmen and I, anyway.
Oh.
Kevin and I talked about it, then I found out that Carmen was invited to, we had already talked about not going and Johnny got, because Johnny was going and Meg was going. But I didn't know that then everyone had been, I don't care, whatever makes sense. We just felt like we wanted to make sure we were getting updates, but it didn't matter who was, so I'm totally fine with you going. Totally cool.
Okay. Great.
All right, I will.
So that is the bid tomorrow, and I think.
Tomorrow attending members.
Maybe.
Okay, well, unless there's a reason not to, then I will attend.
Sure.
Okay.
Great.
And.
You're an adjunct member of the housing committee.
I think we all are.
Yeah.
So, and then last thing is, I just want to mention, Earth Day, April 21st, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. It is like gonna be a great event. If there are folks that think that it makes sense to participate, let Carmen or I know and we'll connect you with the right person. But yeah, we've got everyone from Young's Dairy to the Glenn to, yeah, all the great things the village is doing and it's gonna be great, so.
Some local food, too. Salsa Brava is gonna be there and also Brother Bear Coffee would be there.
Yes.
For the food.
Yes. That's the best thing, yeah. So, all right.
I actually have a quick announcement.
That's right.
So on March 9th, from 5 until 7 at the Herndon Gallery, we will be doing a slap-together rendition of Women's Voices Out Loud. Rehearsal or the run-through is from 6 until 9 this Wednesday, if you want to participate with it as a performer. And then the show itself is Saturday from 5 until 7 at the Herndon. It was in the newspaper, it's on the village's Facebook page. We've had people submit visual art for the performance that'll be hung this week, up Saturday, and will hang through the 24th of March. If you, if anybody would like to submit another piece of visual art, then they can email me at the village email, at my village email, cbrown@yso.com. It's not the big long one anymore.
Big long ones still work.
The big long one, yeah.
Okay. All right, we're good. Okay, I see Tony Dosick is in the.
Am I ready? I'm on?
Yeah, I think we have her down. Is that, was that not the expectation, Judy?
Correct.
Yep, okay. Get on.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to describe where we are with the livable, equitable, age-friendly project. My name is Tony Dosick and I'm the project director. In your packet, you have the action plan report that we sent to the National AARP office as required. In that, we have joined more than 500 communities nationwide who have submitted their action plan. The 15 active action plans that we have developed reflect the lived experience and needs of the residents of Yellow Springs as determined in the community survey. Some of them directly involve village staff, most of them do not. We have already started implementing. The village received a $10,000 grant from DMH Dayton Inc., the fund of the Dayton Foundation on behalf of the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission's Institute for Livable and Equitable Communities in order to add four Happy to Chat benches along Xenia Avenue and to purchase tools for sidewalk cleanup by Mitzi Miller's Group, as I call them, in partnership with the Youth Action Board. Meg Leatherman has been super helpful in getting this project off the ground and you should see some blue benches along Xenia Avenue installed before July 1. I can answer any questions about what a Happy to Chat bench is. Another key action was to find an approach that would bring people together to examine and understand controversial issues in a collaborative and highly participatory manner and would be relatively easy to do without special training. We chose the World Cafe approach. We held our first village cafe in January, supported by the Yellow Springs Community Foundation. We will hold another one in April and May on affordability. More than 100 people attended the January cafe and we expect an equal number for the ones in April and May. We hope to hold three to four of these village cafes every year as a way of bringing village residents together on an ongoing basis to grow familiarity and expertise with the approach. We are working with the village and others to install black history markers to identify and describe places in our community that have important significance for our village, particularly for the contributions of black residents in our village. We are looking for funding for that and have every confidence we will find it. I would be happy to brief council in general or individual council members on our progress on other key initiatives for 2024-25. The learning village, welcome packets, increasing the safety of rental housing, and exploring housing options for larger homes that could increase affordable living spaces in the village. We work with many partners and collaborators in addition to village government, the Inclusive and Resilient Yellow Springs Coalition, the Yellow Springs Senior Center, Village Mediation, the 365 Project, Yellow Springs High School, and others. And I want to personally thank the Morgan Family Foundation, the Dayton Foundation, and the Yellow Springs Community Foundation for funding the position of project director. Having a paid, committed staff person is what has helped us to go from an idea in 2019 to implementation in 2024. Thank you very much.
Let's, you asked about, or offered to give us updates, why don't we allow some of those things to come to fruition and then we can certainly talk about how updates look?
I know you mentioned that Lynn is gonna report on the village cafe, which was one of the projects under this, so you'll certainly get an update on that one.
Yeah, okay, great.
I think I'll also highlight, you know, just so folks know, like, that $10,000 grant we got from the Dayton Foundation, we were one of four communities in a five-county region to receive that. So we've been on the forefront and are constantly called out for that. And Tony, thanks for your leadership. It's been really amazing. I guess I just want to highlight some things that excite me about the report. One is thinking about Beatty Hughes and, I mean, that is something where, you know, there was some controversy in the past, but, you know, the reality is, we can really purpose that space in a way that could be amazing for the village. And so it's obviously not gonna be parking, but it could be other things. And so I just wanted to flag that. I guess the other thing is, I was happy to see that the cost sharing around fixing sidewalks was elevated. You know, there's a great program in Austin, Texas about what they've done. I mean, there are folks in town, including my landlord, who took advantage of, you know, and Johnny knows this, when we have, you know, our folks in town, like, repairing sidewalks to take advantage of that. So there's some great things in this report and thanks for all the work.
Well, it's been a collaborative effort for sure, but yeah, we're pretty proud of ourselves.
Excellent, excellent, and we're proud of you, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks again, Tony. And just for the record, the report that Tony and Brian have referenced was in our last meetings packet, but it's not in this packet. If you happen to go looking for it, it'll be in the last meetings packet. Okay? All right, great, thanks, thanks again.
So is there a report different from the one that was in this packet?
Actually, yeah. So actually, the report in the last packet was from village cafe.
Right.
The report in this packet was based on the survey of the community.
The action plan, right?
Yep.
Right, the final report is submitted to the AARP.
Yep, okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. And we have a women's march proposal announcement, yeah?
Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to voice my opinion. My name is Darryl Bohannon, AKA Ms. Demure. I'm an activist and producer of Hoppus Wazaro Presents, The Ms. Demure Show, which is the oldest LGBTQ+ public access variety talk show in the USA. And now I'm back on air in Yellow Springs, plug away. Here today, my pitch is for a purple march, a women's purple march during Pride. I think this is so essential right now in this election year. Last fall, Ohio became a purple state when both sides of the political spectrum came together and they voted yes on issue one. And I believe right now it is imperative that our sisters get together and have this march, especially for women's reproductive rights, trans women. This is going to really combine all of those things of diversity. So I'm hoping that if we all get together and have this march, we will cross the finish line and keep diversity happening. So I'm proposing this for Pride. Last year, Columbus Pride had over 4,000 people. It was the biggest one ever. What was wonderful about it is that there was so much more support and there was more sponsorship, but the message was lost because it became one big commercial. And I believe here in the blue dot of Ohio, it's just gonna be a lot more personal, it's gonna be to the heart, and it's gonna have a lot more meaning. So I hope you will think about that. Let me see. I really believe that, oh boy, I'm nervous. With the fight going on with the Supreme Court, this is another reason why we should really get together and they, I really think my sisters are the one that's gonna really take us over the finish line. I just hope that with this march, it'll be so loud that the other states in this country will follow suit and once again take us to the finish line. And what a perfect time to do this, to be here on this night. This is the beginning of women's history model, so how appropriate is this? So I hope you will listen to my proposal and think about it and let's have that march. I'm gonna be dressed as a suffragette. I'm gonna wear all white with a purple sash and I've invited Mayor Pam and every other female mayor or women in politics to join our march. So I've been on TV for almost 24 years and I'm nervous right now. I just had a delicious meal at Young's Dairy and that's all I have to say. So thank you for your time and I hope you hear my sisters cry.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
I wanna, I just wanted to let everybody here know that I'm, right now I'm fangirling. 78 Linden Avenue, off Third, at a very, very important time in my life, you was on the little, you was on DATV. So there's that piece. I would like to maybe email you after this meeting.
Yeah.
And we can get in touch with you after the meeting, so this is something that we can make happen.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's so nice to say. And Ms. Demure and I, like, know each other really well and, yeah, I also wanna, you know, say that, you know, we're in support. I think the fact that you're in touch with Judy is really helpful in, you know, thinking about how those events get organized. And, yeah, it's been really exciting, so, and Carmen, I think you would do a better job on the.
The suffragette?
That's what I did.
Oh, really? Yeah.
I certainly think Newton's a green tea, you know?
See, but it does highlight, you know, Dayton Access TV then has been, like, helping us connect with more shows and I believe your podcast is now, like, one of the things that we highlight, is that right, Ben? Yep, so.
And variety show.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your time. And Mr. Murray happened to have mentioned voting and my plug, I feel like I'm the resident vote monger.
Yeah.
Just want to encourage folks to prepare for the March 19th special elections. It's, as we all know, it's our primary and I would just encourage folks to look at the ballots now because, you know, we're a partially open primary state, so there's a Democratic ballot, a Republican ballot, and a non-committed ballot. And for those folks who normally just grab the D ballot and run, there are items that you ought to consider that will only show up on the Republican ballot. Just a good example is Green County, we are in Green County, Green County county commissioners. We'd like to have some say in who those folks are. Well, they're all Republicans, so, and by no means am I suggesting that's bad. It just happens to be that all of the candidates are Republican, so for those of us who would normally gravitate towards a Democratic ballot, you don't get to vote on who the candidates are for a Green County commission. And we are here in Green County. And there's other races that are of that same ilk where the folks in leadership impact our lives, but if we don't, I'll say crossover because I tend to vote Democratic, but I've voted Republican. And oh, by the way, I did submit a letter to the editor, maybe some of this, some of this went into more detail about this, you know, but it's, sometimes folks will talk about others in the community and put a D or an R behind their name and it's not that person's philosophy or way of living, that just happens to be how they voted in the last primary. So there's no harm, if you will, in crossing over in either direction, but just want to encourage folks in general to become informed, you know, about the nuances that we're gonna be presented with. And again, consider whether, if you want your voice to be heard about some particular offices, you're gonna have to pick a particular ballot, which might be different than what you would normally pick. And I'm looking at Riley and I don't know, yeah, okay, so I, great, thanks. So hopefully other folks are seeing the same things, but I think, I think this is a big deal and certainly one thing I want to say, one reason I'm often very, very, and I'm no different than anyone else at the roster room, but I just, and one of the things I mentioned in the, in the letter, is, you know, there are some of us for whom no one had to fight, suffer harm, and die for us to get the right to vote. Most of us up here, somebody did have to go to bat for us because it was not an inalienable right according to the original constitution, if you will. So enough soapbox stuff, but that was a public service announcement about the importance of voting in general and in particular, how we might want to govern ourselves with this particular, in this particular season because of the way the ballots are written. And I'll just say it, you don't have to look up a year, just do Ohio ballot lookup and eventually you'll get the information you need and you'll be able to see the different ballots and you will only be allowed to vote on one of them. So choose wisely. All right? Thank you. I think we have spent enough time on announcements, but I will open the floor if someone else has something, if something's come up. I mean, we've been very liberal. All right, seeing no activity, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. We only have the minutes of our last meeting from February 20th, February 20th, 2024, regular session. Can I get a motion for approval of that agenda?
So moved.
Or that, those minutes, thank you, thank you, appreciate, appreciate the motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now comes time for review of the agenda, as we all are aware, swear have an opportunity, excuse me, look over the agenda, look for things that maybe have been overlooked that you think ought to be added to the agenda or if anything else is planned to be discussed that you'd like to ask be removed from the agenda.
The only thing I'd like to say is, I'd like, in the context of the village manager's report, to send some kind of indication about the planning commission recommendation for inclusionary zoning. So I don't want it to be an agenda item, but I guess it'd be nice if, it seems to me like a no-brainer for council to just say, like, yeah, this is a good thing to explore, but if we're not there, then maybe it could be on a future agenda item, but I don't wanna side rail things.
Well, since you mentioned or you asked about the manager's report, I will just ask, what is the status? Are we waiting for a report or is the folks involved waiting for some information that hasn't been provided yet? If so, I don't want to.
I'm gonna defer to.
Well, the trajectory, and Meg can correct me if I'm wrong, but inclusionary zoning was brought up.
Well, the trajectory, and Meg can correct me if I'm wrong, but inclusionary zoning was brought up and Planning Commission as a group determined that they needed more information from the Planning and Zoning Administrator. They asked that that be brought to them at some point, that they've not yet received that, but that was their intent, was bring us more information so that we can study it, understand it, and decide whether or not that's something we want to pursue.
And we're still in the process of complying with that request?
Correct.
So I would submit that we allow that process to come to fruition. And for whatever report folks, the Planning Commission is already expecting that to be provided because it's my understanding of the little bit that I know just the bits and pieces. It's like, I'm going to hand the floor over.
I might want to get clarification now, right?
Yeah.
In the meantime. So that, I was under a little bit of a different impression. I thought they were waiting for the council to provide direction of the Planning Commission to even explore it. But I'm happy to do that. If that's fine, I can pull information together and report back to them on if that's what the council wishes. But then the piece, I wasn't sure what Brian was alluding to with the manager's report piece, like...
Well, just because we don't really have like an obvious spot, but Meg, what you said is my understanding as well, is that it's just a matter of does council like even want to entertain this or not?
Or have staff dedicate time on researching inclusionary zoning and reporting back to Planning Commission? Do you even support that concept, is what I thought?
Well, we can just get a read here. Is there anyone opposed?
I want some, before we start moving pieces around, it was brought up as a suggestion. I would like to think about it before I hop right on and say yea or nay. I need more information. I mean, how I feel about it personally versus how it could work for the village are two different things.
Why don't we just table it? I mean, I don't want us to get into anything that's going to eat up a lot of time. And certainly, Carmen, I appreciate that. If you feel like you need more information that's not currently available. I'm going to, Johnny, put the onus on you to try to connect the dots and get us to a point where we can talk about it.
Yes.
Okay?
And then again, sorry, back to the manager's report piece. Are you looking for something to be in the manager's report regarding it like that? I just want to make sure we have what's in the manager's report, but you haven't.
Not until, not until council like indicates.
Okay.
So, yeah. Thanks, Meg.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. So, review of the agenda still? Anything else? All righty. My favorite part of the meeting, petitions and communications.
Gavin, if you'd like to read, you're welcome to.
No, it's my favorite part to listen to.
The clerk will receive and file Matt Raska about zoning, housing and zoning reform. It was like a link to an article. House and Styles about inclusionary zoning. Rajan Coz, sorry if I'm not sure if I pronounced it correctly, about thanks to the village crews. Kim Carlson, Emily Seibel, and Cindy Seek, all about thanks to village crews for work getting the, you know, keeping the village running, getting power back on with the storms last week. And information from Chief Burge about the response to the concerns about noise complaints.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for all of that. And like I said, it was my favorite spot. I appreciate you doing it. Thanks, Gavin. All right, public hearings and legislation. Typically, if we have any second readings or whatnot, we'd address that upfront, but seeing none, we're just going to jump right in. Judy, if you could, read Resolution 2024-22 by Title Only, please.
This is authorizing the village manager to purchase nine decorative street lamp poles for upgrade and replacement.
All right. Can I get a motion? Oops, I'm sorry. Gavin, can I get a motion?
Sorry.
That's good. Okay, thank you. All right. So I'm going to...
It's me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And look, when Meg got up, I thought, which one is this?
Yeah, the first one that I seen, it's because mine's a purchase. This is to continue the streetlights from, on Zingia Avenue from Limestone to Davis in front of library section on both sides. We wanted to stay, we did get an alternate price to get a pole similar to what we have. The savings was only like $100 or $200 a pole, so it doesn't make sense. We'd like to stay with the same style. They've been pretty healthy poles. When cars hit them, they don't break as much. We've only had two broken the last 10 years that I know of. So this is to be able to purchase them this year, install them later this year, and then we'll come back at the end of the year for the next section, which will probably be between Cory Street between Zingia Avenue and Dayton. So we're trying to highlight some other areas in the business district.
No pun intended, highlight.
So Johnny, we're talking about there are five on the west side and four on the east side?
There will actually be probably four on the library side, which is the east side, and probably three on the other. We're getting a couple more for spares.
For spares, okay.
And we'll be spacing them out a little bit further versus downtown. They'll be spaced out a little bit further. But if you go by the library section, it's pretty dark right now. So we want to be able to highlight that.
Can we add a couple sharos to that initiative?
Is that on the blacktop? Yeah, that's, those are already scheduled for later in the summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can't do that with the weather that we're having now, but it will be part of the painting.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion on this resolution? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. The resolution has passed.
Oh, and I'm sorry. I probably shouldn't. So this is already in the budget or we...
It is.
Okay.
It is.
Okay. All right, Judy, if you could read, please, Resolution 2024-23 by Title Only.
Nope. This is the, do you want it by Title Only or do you want to say the thank yous in full? Oh, sorry.
Well, are we done? Do we have all the thank yous we want to have?
Well, in this...
In this particular one, yes. This is for the AMP communities.
Okay.
Another one will be coming next council.
Okay. All right. That's what I had in my mind, in my mind, is that there was more information to come.
Correct.
So...
If you wanted...
Your suggestion?
A lot of people thank, I'm just going to say that right now.
Yep, I was thinking that was coming later, but this is appropriate. Yes, please read it in full. Thank you. And Carmen, thank you for that.
This is recognizing the communities that provided mutual aid assistance to the Village of Yellow Springs to restore electric service following the severe weather event of February 28th, 2024. Whereas the village was hit by damaging winds and lightning on February 28th, 2024. And whereas the storm caused extensive damage to the village's electrical distribution system, downing lines and poles throughout the community. And whereas timely repair to the electric system was beyond the capabilities of the village. And whereas under the American Municipal Power System, municipal electric crews from Pickwa, Tip City, and Wapakoneta immediately responded to assist the village. And whereas this assistance made it possible to restore electric service to all homes and businesses in the village before 12:00 a.m. the night of the 28th. Now therefore, council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section one, council hereby recognizes and expresses its sincere appreciation to the City of Wapakoneta, the City of Tip City, and the City of Pickwa for providing equipment and electric crews to assist the Village of Yellow Springs in restoring electric services on February 28th, 2024. Section two, council wishes to extend its sincere thanks to the elected officials and the responding employees from each community for their outstanding assistance and willingness to provide the crews and resources requested by the Village of Yellow Springs.
All righty. Now, may we get a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right. Thank you. So Johnny?
Okay, so without going into a lot of detail, we wanted to get this out to the local communities. And morning coffee conversation, I'm going to say to Dino, we were just trying to, people were trying to figure out how this mutual aid happened so fast. AMP has worked with the communities. We are considered a green sector. And while I was going one way with the storm, Ben was going another way. Ben actually found Dayton Street. It was a matter of Ben picking up the phone, waking Scott McKenzie up. Literally within five minutes, Scott had it on the GroupMe app that we got hit by a storm. Within two minutes of the GroupMe app, text going out to all the people in the green sector. Wapakoneta had already said they're sending two guys down. Within four minutes, Tip City and Pickwa said they're sending four guys, or four guys each coming down, or four linemen. So within 10 minutes, we literally had mutual aid en route. We knew, Ben sent them the address by the GroupMe app. They knew where to show up. And by eight o'clock, we was standing with them at the farm doing the safety briefing with them. We'd already got everything secured and everything was safe. And we was able to do the safety briefing with them. I took one crew one way, Ben took the other two another way. And that's how we started our day. At the end, they was here all the way until 11:30. We turned the power on and then we released them to go back. So literally another tool that we have in our toolbox. It's not a matter of just calling, trying to get people. Literally, it's done by an app on our phone. And the right people responded immediately. So a big thanks to AMP for getting this going. It's not like it was in 2011 when the village got hit. We had to assess everything. You didn't have mutual aid until the afternoon. Literally, these guys come in, got their trucks, and headed our way. So that's what I wanted to highlight. Judy and I have talked about it, and staff has talked about it. We don't really want to rush to get this report done. Ben is actually going on vacation on Wednesday. We want to give the storm his due time. We want to be able to give thank yous to the right people. So that is the reason why we pushed it off till the following.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, I don't have too much time. I just have to jump in real fast, too. I want to recognize my team who was dealing with an unprecedented situation with, I believe we figured out the cause or believe we figured out the cause, but for the first time in the history of us having our own dispatch center, our generator failed, leaving us without any power. There was no computers, there was no radio, there was no phone. Everything rolled over to our 911 line, which is a landline. As a part of a debrief, we've established a lot of protocols that we're going to be putting in place to prevent such a thing from happening in the future, backups to backups and such. But I had two dispatchers on because one was training, which was just sheer luck because it was absolutely a two dispatcher job, without a doubt. And they did, I mean, there's nothing I could have done any differently or any better. Two of them are also, both of them are also fairly new to the organization, not new to dispatching, but to lose power like that and to know exactly what to do, how to get things done, to make sure people are safe and to continue public safety efforts, I just, I can't say how impressed enough I am with them. So a big thank you to our dispatch team and our officers who all showed up. One phone call, we need you here now, got on the streets, assessed the damage, and was out, were out helping people. So a big shout out to my guys.
Great. Thank you. Awesome.
I back that up. It's not good when Paige calls you at 4:15 in the morning and says, "The generator didn't come on. How do we fix it?" And I'm like, oh crap. So yes, we're, Gavin and I were speaking prior to the meeting starting. We had to find redundancy to redundancy because we did lose the generator. And actually, we had to power back on before the generator actually got fixed. So we was able to isolate some things. And Paige, like she said, her crews were phenomenal. They come in. We was able to concentrate on the power emergencies and the facility emergencies while we had our radios in the car and you could hear them going street by street and radioing back into dispatch saying, "That street's clean. That street's clean." And then if they had an issue, they wrote it down and we took emergencies by emergency. So, and Miami Township was as well. It's like we went to the Super Bowl. We won the Super Bowl. We're going to debrief tomorrow because we know when it comes in next time, it's going to be tougher, but we're going to be prepared as well for it.
Excellent.
Excellent. Yeah.
Just to say, the thing that I was at, that we were talking about before, is just the sirens. Just so folks know, you know, we got the text that the sirens weren't working. It's part of the same generator issue.
Correct.
You said everything except for the sirens.
Yes, sorry. Tornado sirens failed due to the lack of power and the generator being struck by lightning.
But at least they failed after the, I mean, we were in the basement at the time it failed.
You can replace the plug in Hyperreach. If you're not on Hyperreach, get on it.
Absolutely. Hyperreach, correct.
Get on Hyperreach. You can do that through our website.
Great, I do. Yes. And we should make sure that's highlighted in the reports in big letters as well.
I'm just going to say out loud, just because I don't know if a mic picked that up. So just Hyperreach, if you go onto YSO.com, you can, Hyperreach is the system that the county sends out the messages to get, so that if you're not, if you don't hear the sirens, you get a message. So just encourage folks to sign up for that. I know I had several neighbors reach out and say, "How'd you find out about that?" And I told them about Hyperreach. So I think it's good everybody knows.
Yep. Indeed.
Yeah, and you'll get a very loud notification from your phone on that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you won it. At the time it happened, it needed to be loud. So, well, great. Excellent. Thanks for all of those comments. Really makes one proud to be part of a larger community. You know, I sometimes am joking when I'm in Dayton, I refer to it as the greater Yellow Springs metropolitan area. But it's good that we have these neighboring communities that are there to provide for us. And I'm sure we are there for them when they need it. Okay? Great. Well, regarding this resolution, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
So just Judy, so we will be sending this to the jurisdictions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Sign, see you when delivered.
And then Johnny will talk about the larger effort later.
Next council.
Yep. Methinks we are now to Resolution 2024-24. Judy, if you could read that by Title Only.
This is an agreement for inclusion of the Village of Yellow Springs zoning classifications on the Green County GIS mapping system.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Now, are you up?
It's Mike's turn.
I'm here for questions, if you have any. Memo was pretty detailed and just thought, Green County is requesting that we sign this agreement with them to continue to provide the mapping through the GIS platform.
Is there any cost?
No, not definitely.
Makes sense?
Okay, I found this on the web.
Oh, my gosh. AI, right?
Yeah, yeah. She's listening.
Yeah, we're tracking. All right. Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to check. So, and so it seems like this is basically just to cover legal issues.
Yep. And Amy can answer questions about that if she can.
I think we're good. All right. All right. Seeing no other indications for discussion. All those in favor of this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you. We're now to citizen concerns. This is a special part of the meeting where members of the community, including council, but members of the community who have an item that they'd like to discuss or share with us. It can come, any item that's not already on the agenda, you'll be allowed three minutes. Judy will be our timekeeper. Again, I just want to reiterate, this is for items that are not already scheduled to be discussed as part of the agenda. So are there any citizen concerns? Yep, I see, I see a couple hands. I see. Go ahead, Pam.
Pam Cunnine, Mayor Pam. I'm here wearing both hats at the moment simply because I want to share a first-person story to what Johnny just talked about. On Wednesday morning, when I emerged from my basement following the wind event, I went right outside and started with my flashlight, picking up sticks on Fairfield Pike. And then I heard from a social media post that the police were down toward Ellis Pond, not Ellis, the Duck Pond, and said, "Stay away from Fairfield Pike. There's a lot going on there." And they were right. So I got to witness all the lights down under the bridge by the Duck Pond and what was happening further up the street. I have a big maple in my front yard and a pretty sizable branch had come down and fallen, fortunately, on one of the crosspieces of the electric pole. So I was out there picking up the sticks and getting them out of the way because the drivers were crunching on those. So along came two bucket trucks that I, trucks that I didn't recognize. And they pulled in and stopped and a guy jumped out and I pointed up and he, until that point, I hadn't looked up. And when we all looked up, there was that branch sticking out. These guys got out of that truck. They were friendly. They were polite. They immediately, one of them was on a phone. The next thing you know, a big bucket truck was pulling up. Guy got out, went up in the bucket, and he was like a surgeon. He had one of those long poles with a little fuzz thing on the other end. And he just started carving like he was carving a turkey or something. And the next thing you know, smaller branches were falling down. Then he was able to get the big one and within... the big one, and within minutes, it was cleaned up, he helped me move a couple big pieces I couldn't lift, "Thank you ma'am," I mean, polite as could be, really, really good folks out there doing that work. And I've talked to several citizens since, who said, "Mayor Pam, when you're in the office, thank these guys." And I thought, "Well, I'm going to be up here at the council meeting anyway, to swear in our village manager ceremoniously, so let me just say thanks publicly, not only to our police department, and to all the other staff and folks who were doing things, but especially to Johnny, because I'm in the middle of all this, and I see his gray vehicle go by, and there's that toot and his friendly wave. We are very, very fortunate to have the crew we have. Thank you."
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pam.
Yeah, yeah, I think, Johnny, are you out of your sleep deprivation yet? I hope you're...
Deering a lot of resident business. Again, amen to that. Chief, want to thank you for everything you did, Tanner, Ben, Johnny, it was a big, you know, it was a Owens heroic effort on everyone's part. I mean, you all worked on the businesses to get downtown up and running as quick as you could, and residential, we did what we had to do, and we appreciate everything you did. Goes a long way. Thank you, thank you very much. One other thing I was looking for is the CBE. Are you guys getting the monthly reports from Allison? Not looking for an answer, just seeing if that's, if that's coming to you guys, so you see there's activity, or what activity is coming, or if there's activity. That's it, thank you, John. Again, thank you, John, appreciate you.
Thanks.
That'll be on you.
We are.
Okay.
I'll do it again there.
Okay. So then you'll share that with YSTC meetings?
I will.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'd just like to fire on back that I do believe Dino and Sheila provided coffee, they were slinging it out, all sundry.
As fast as they could make it, we was getting it.
Man, what a great place to live.
If you didn't think so Wednesday, I can tell you.
Yeah.
And the report will be fantastic, because there is more to the story.
All right, great.
Or Harvey would say.
I love it, yeah, you just needed yourself.
Yes.
All right. Any other citizen concerns? All right, seeing none, we are moving on to special reports. According to what I have, first is our Public Arts and Culture Commission End of Year Report. I don't see Amy, but is someone else going to present, or we're just taking the written part? I know it's in the packet.
So it is in the packet, I was, a brief overview, Amy did a really good job on reporting what PAC got into last year. One of the things that we did that I think that, you know, oh, look at that. One of, oh. Yeah. Yeah, like, the Public Arts and Culture Commission supports the mission of Village of Yellow Springs in facilitating, promoting, and recognizing that public arts add value by providing educational opportunities, activism, economic sustainability, and an improved quality of life. The commission navigates and connects our creative community and the arts community with the village government. What I will say about this particular board, or this particular commission makeup, is it's made up with actual people who actually make art. And that makes a, right, it makes a tremendous difference. And part of the reason is, well, a main part of the reason is, people who are artists or who create art, not only think outside of the box, they live outside of the box, and so problem solving becomes very creative. We were, when I first came on council and was on commission, we were kind of, it was kind of disjointed, and we were struggling with the veto award, and we had this, you know, we have this immensely and limitlesslessly talented community, and we're trying to find a way to honor that talent. We're doing a veto award maybe once quarterly initially, it seemed like, and then it was like twice a year, and so this particular iteration that commission said, "Hey, let's just do a one-time event in November during kind of award season, and we'll make, we'll make an awards event out of it." We did that, we pulled it off in maybe six weeks, but through partnership that we have with Antioch College, specifically Michael Caselli, he's on the board, and is an immensely talented person, immensely talented multimedia artist, basically, he's, I can't say enough about Michael's talent, but he designed the award, some of the recipients were Valerie Blackwell Truitt for dance, Deborah Dixon, visual arts, Pierre, visual arts, he got his award via Facebook Messenger, he joined us that way, and then Dr. Kathy Rehm for music. So we put that together. One of the things that we're working on this year is trying to have some sort of event every couple months, and we're on top of that now. Right now, we're Women's Voices Out Loud is coming up. It was important that we did it during International Women's Day, or at least tried to keep it close to that day, and I was doing some research, I think that we haven't had it since 2000, I don't want to say 16, but I feel like it's 16, it's been a long time ago.
Probably even longer, yeah, so, but yeah, you're right.
But participating in, participating in Women's Voices Out Loud is one of, a very influential kind of community event that, that is a uniquely Yellow Springs event. So bringing that back, the other thing is, April is National Poetry Month, we're going to have a feature of Black Appalachian poets somewhere in town, we're putting that together now. There are a lot of things that are, that are on the horizon that I'm super excited about, and the commission is really excited about. And it's time to, it's time to celebrate the artistic contribution of this, of this village again. That's...
So, Women's Voices Out Loud, do you guys talk about bringing it back to the Bryant Center, or?
Well...
Because that's, I mean, that's when, you know, it got shut down, I mean, it was...
It's going to be at the Herndon.
Okay. So, you guys didn't think about doing it here, or you like it better at the Herndon?
Oh, well, this, I mean, there was, there was a certain incidence where, yeah, yeah, so, no. And it's going to, it's going to, it's going to be at the Herndon, it's space that's available, it's beautiful space. We had the veto there, and Michael Caselli is on board, and so, I think that, you know, if I'm being completely honest, we don't want to risk censorship.
Right. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about is, well, or just comment, I'm excited to see that there's focus on the Gant Park mural, so, I mean, it was in the PowerPoint, so, I mean, that's some of you guys there?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you, Cameron, appreciate that. Thanks for the update, thanks for allowing us to go through that information earlier with, with it being in the packet. Chief Birch, I'm going to ask you to step up, please. I'm showing a report by a young, a young Mr. Andrus, but I, I thought I'd call you up and...
Yes, please, I would love to introduce who I so affectionately refer to as the finest of us all, as much as it embarrasses him, and you can see I'm shaking his head. I just wanted to introduce him because I know he won't give himself the credit he deserves, so I asked him to present on this topic tonight, because he put in, without a doubt, 99.9% of the work on this project, and it's very important to me, and once you learn about it, you'll realize it's very important to the community and policing in general, especially right now with everything that's been going on with policing. So Doug has done a phenomenal job of not only that, but he's also just, he's our public relations guy, he's our business liaison, he's our community engagement guy, and so there was no better fit for somebody to lead the charge in getting us to a fully accredited agency. So, without further ado, I'll let him tell you a little bit about his hard work.
Great. I feel like there should be some applause there.
I don't think Chief gives herself much credit. Basically, all I've done is just, I pester people to do things until it gets done, and the work is really mostly done by other people, but...
There's a skill there.
She just said, "I'm Officer Doug Andrus of the Yellow Springs Police Department, I'm here to present on the Ohio Collaborative. 2016 Governor Kecic assigned Executive Order 2014-06K, creating a task force on community police relations after a series of incidents in Ohio and the nation that heightened challenges between the community and the police. The task force represented the governor, legislature, attorney general, the Ohio Supreme Court, law enforcement, organized labor, local community leaders, faith-based community, business municipalities, and prosecutors. Findings of this task force led to the creation of the Ohio Collaborative. The Ohio Collaborative is a 12-person panel of law enforcement experts and community leaders from throughout the state who established Ohio's first state law enforcement standards on August 28, 2015. The collaborative works closely with partners, including the community and law enforcement agencies, to implement the new standards. All law enforcement agencies in Ohio are expected to meet or exceed the standards as they develop policies and procedures to conform to the new expectations. Over 600 law enforcement agencies in all 88 counties, representing over 87% of law enforcement officers in Ohio, are participating in the process. Each agency is expected to meet criteria in six categories and additional standards regarding body-worn cameras and executive orders. The six categories are community engagement, use of force, bias-free policing, vehicle pursuit policies and implementation, and youth support intervention. For the calendar year 2023, the Yellow Springs Police Department qualified and quantified our adherence to the standards in every category, executive orders, and body-worn cameras. We are granted provisional or final certification in each area. Although meeting the standards is expected, and every agency in the state process of demonstrating adherence is very involved and time-consuming, many large departments have officers whose primary detail is the Ohio Collaborative. After initially reviewing the standards, I realized the Yellow Springs Police Department has probably been meeting the Ohio Collaborative's standards since its inception, the standards inception. This has made the qualifying process less daunting, but still very time-consuming. There's always room for improvement, which is especially difficult in a climate of ongoing staff changes and increased expectations of the police. But the Ohio Collaborative processes confirm my belief and justify my pride in the quality of service our department provides the citizens of Yellow Springs."
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Officer Andrus. While you were speaking, I was, and you talked about meeting and/or exceeding, and then I wondered about our policing, community policing guidelines, which are, you know, fairly forward-thinking, and I wondered where those match. It sounds like we either are hitting the nail on the head, if you will, or exceeding, perhaps, in some of these criteria.
Well, in community policing, we do a lot for, one of the standards is community engagement, and how do we engage the community? Well, most of you have businesses downtown, I've seen me, and you've seen other officers walking around and engaging with the businesses. I check on the businesses, the downtown businesses, once or twice, we can try and hit the others as regularly as I can. We have done many projects during the last year that, that people who were involved didn't know about it, but a lot of times, maybe others aren't aware. Safety Village, Officer Kincaid and Chief Birch put together Safety Village, which was a grade school, I guess kindergarten.
Kindergarten, first grade, right?
Age, how many students did we have, or kids did we have attend that?
Did you, we had 15.
15 kids who came to attend that, and it was, we also had Touch a Truck, a thing that we put together. Our officers are, have school detail, every school morning, we try to have an officer present at Mills Lawn School when kids are coming into school. Matter of fact, Chief, we work with the Safety Patrol, Chief provides them with a notice every Friday morning to encourage participation in that. We do, I've done bicycle safety with kids at Mills Lawn, and support the bike hike that's done there. Officer Kincaid is actually a school resource officer, and his services have been offered to all the schools in Yellow Springs currently. Green County Education Service Center is the only school that has asked for his services, so he is, he is there on site at Green County Learning Center several days a week when he's on duty, so kind of a contract with them, where they pay a piece of his salary while he's there as a, as a school resource officer. Actually, what else have we done that I've...
Endless.
Yeah, we've done a lot of things.
We've done it with the high school, we've done it with the tree events. It's on and on.
Yeah, so I would say for a department our size, we have made a considerable effort, I'd stack us up against anybody for things we do to actually seek engagement, and positive engagement with citizens in Yellow Springs.
Well, great. Well, that's wonderful, I appreciate that. Any of us have any comments? I'll add a comment at the end. Nothing? I, I think I'm really excited to hear about your engagement with younger people. I mean, I work at, I work at a local college, and you'll tend to run into people of that generation, of that age, you know, who, based on events in our country and in the world, you'll have less than the best relationship, whether it's directly or indirectly, based on their history with police, but I think reaching these young folks as early as you are, and, and showing them a positive example of what the uniform, the badge, the service can provide for the community, I think is, is awesome. And just really look forward, I'm proud of what our, like you said, our little small village does in comparison to some of the other bigger places. So, I'm going to tell you, Doug, whenever I hear about police engagement, all I hear is Doug Andrus. I'm sure, I'm sure there's a whole bunch of, yeah, well, I would submit, you know, what you, what folks see in you, the downtown villages, businesses, rather, that's, you walk on water, and I just want to commend you personally for that.
Well, I think that's kind, but as I say, while, while other officers are, are busy doing other things, I'm the friendly police officer, helps Curious George find his way back to the man in the yellow hat.
Well, good, excellent. All right. If nothing else, from rest of council, thank you, Officer Andrus, appreciate your time. All righty. And thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. All righty. Our next special report is the Village Mediation Annual Report. Diane.
Sorry, kind of falling apart.
Oh, sorry, didn't see that.
Thank you for having me here, I'm Diane Diller, Coordinator of the Village Mediation Program.
Yes.
And first, I want to thank you for funding this program for over 30 years. I tend to think of it, tend to see it as one of Yellow Springs' best-kept secrets, but in the past year or so, we've been trying to come to the forefront, the household word. Because it's been a while since there's been a year-end report, I believe, and some of you who are new, I'd like to tell you just a little bit about us first. There's more in the written report that you have. We have eight volunteer mediators, nine mediator trainees, one part-time coordinator who gets a stipend, that's me. Our council liaison up until this year, for several years, was Mary Ann McQueen, and now, thank you, is Carmen Brown. This service is free and confidential to anyone who lives or works in Yellow Springs or in Miami Township. Although it's funded by the village, we operate independently, we're not connected to any court, we're not connected to the police department or any legal entity, so parties who participate in mediation, that's totally voluntary on their part, they're not required to attend. There are many models, styles, approaches to mediation, and I think it's important to know what kind we use, because ours is very non-directive. We're not going to tell you what to do, we're not going to tell you that you're right or wrong, we're not going to take sides, we don't offer solutions, rather, we help parties express themselves and listen to each other, often in ways they haven't been able to before, and therein lies the gem. This empowers the parties to come up with their own solutions, rather than having solutions imposed upon them from the outside. However, we have no authority to enforce any agreements or solutions that they come up with, because we're not the legal entity, so their compliance with their own solutions and their own agreements is voluntary. The biggest source of inquiries is people calling us on their own. We also receive referrals from local... We also receive referrals from local agencies, groups, the PD, Yellow Springs PD, last year made 16 referrals, and each of the following made one referral, the zoning department, mayor's court, and one of our well-known nonprofits. Altogether, there were 41 inquiries and referrals with twice that number of people involved. Of that 41, nine mediations were held. There are various reasons why inquiries don't go to mediation. The biggest one is that one of the parties declines. But also, sometimes they work things out for themselves, sometimes they decide to pursue other avenues, like after talking to me and learning more about it, they decide they're gonna take legal action, or maybe they're gonna go to family therapy to work out their differences. All kinds of situations fall within our, within the realm of mediation that we do. Issues between neighbors or family members, tenant landlord issues, issues between friends, colleagues, coworkers, business relationships. So maybe one's a customer of a business, and there's a difference between the two, or it could be two businesses between each other. And I'd like to highlight one of those. The boards of two local nonprofits who were trying to accomplish a project together but ran into misunderstandings, and the tensions grew, and they weren't able to move forward with their project. So they called us and ended up sending, each of them sent three board members to the table and talked it over with, which was facilitated by two of our mediators. And that was so helpful to them that they came back for a second session a few months later when something else had arisen between them. And then that rippled out, and when there were differences between two staff members in one of those organizations, they came to the table. Two members of the board and those two staff members came to the table twice to make some progress in working through their issues. So I kind of hold this up as the poster child of the mediation program in 2023, the epitome of what we can accomplish. In addition to mediation services, this last year, we also provided events in support of strengthening communications in the village, and those were funded by peacekeeper grants from the Yellow Springs Community Foundation. One of those was last March, way last March, at the invitation of the school board, we held the Village Cafe. That was the first cafe, and that gave over 60 participants the opportunity to express themselves and listen to each other. Our intention in that was to begin building bridges for the differences that had come up in, among us about the school levy, and starting to reverse the cycle of fear and mistrust in our community. And that's been carried forward with the cafe that was just held this last January. And feedback, because feedback from the March, last March event, was that it was really valuable to the participants, and there were requests that we do that more often, and now it's gonna happen. It's already begun happening. An additional peacekeeper grant funded four free workshops for the community in navigating conflict effectively. We've had three of them so far, and 20 to 25 villagers attended. The fourth one, I invite you to, it's a lunch and learn, May 6, on conflict in the workplace. Have you ever heard of such a thing? It would happen. So get, prepare yourself. Come to our lunch and learn.
So that's from 12 to 1, or?
Yeah, 12 to 2:15 on Monday, May 6, at the library, brown bag, bring your, bring your own lunch. And so, so far, we've had three of these workshops, and some attendees are so enthused about it that they've asked for more sessions so that they can practice what they're learning. So Janet Mueller and I are, we're looking into the possibility of doing that, and it looks like that's gonna come together. And that's exciting to me that there's interest, enough interest in people to, to want to get these skills. It's exciting to think what life could be like if more of us had more of these skills. I know that's true of the kind of world I want to live in. Our grant also funded an 18-hour formal mediator training, and that's how, we happen to have nine mediator trainees in the pipeline. So, thank you again for your support. That, and much of that is what's going on in our world.
Well, Diane, thank you, thank you. Do you, it seemed like, and maybe it's just I'm remembering wrong, but it seemed like maybe a couple of years ago, or maybe not that long ago, there, you, there was a need for more mediators, and was that recently resolved through training?
Yeah, that's what this training was about. That's why we were so delighted to get the funding to bring in the Dayton Mediation Center to do a training here in Yellow Springs, so people didn't, that was one deterrent. Yellow Springsers had to go all the way to Dayton for multiple sessions to be trained as a mediator, and so we were able to hold 18 hours of that training here.
Yeah, I just want to say that it's super impressive. From when I first came on council, the interest of maybe five or six people, there's some names that I could throw out there, and it was, it was, you know, I participated with mediation before, and John Gudgel happened to be the person, the coordinator that I worked, that I worked with specifically. But it's really impressive to see the program go from just a couple of people to the, the organization that you've brought to the, the program. It's exciting, and it's, it is, it is kind of a, not kind of a, it is one of our, one of our kind of quiet resources. We're here, you need to know that we're here if you, you want to participate with that. Yeah.
Yeah, and I appreciate that the police department, you know, is one of your main referrals, so.
She keeps that coming. Some referrals from Officer Doug.
Yeah, but yeah, I, I don't know that we've ever had like 15-plus mediators, at least since I've been on council. So Ben, it sounds like if we're not promoting it, we still have an opportunity to promote March 6 on our social, which would be great.
May 6.
Oh, May 6, yeah, sorry, yeah. Yeah, so we got plenty of opportunity. And the other thing I wondered is, have we, have you guys talked about a mediation response unit, like what Dayton has done? Has that come up at all?
It would be, we've thought about it, but everybody is a volunteer, except me, and so that for people to be consistent.
So it would require more of a, like, financial commitment?
Well, a time commitment, and just a commitment commitment, to be available when needed.
Okay. Yeah, several community members have brought this up to me, and, and I don't know, Chief, if you've thought about it, but.
I have. I've actually had any discussions with, I have an acquaintance that works currently with the Dayton Mediation Program, helped actually build that program, and so we've had some very, very high, you know, superficial conversations about it, but I have good contact, so it's something that we want to pursue, I know, for Joe.
Great. I mean, I think in the context of all the great work you're doing around just, you know, the community collab, you know, if it comes up, so, thanks.
Thank you, Diane, and I hope your shoulder gets better.
Oh, yeah, it will. Yeah, I guess it was my turn, it's Rotator Cuff.
I'm part of the Rotator Cuff Club, so I know, I recognize. All right, well, thanks again for your time. Appreciate you. Thank you. All right. Village Manager's Report.
All right, I'm gonna go through this and do some highlights for you. Number one is Spring Meadows. Meg has in the report that they have started on a model home, and I'm also happy to tell you that they have started Phase 2 sewer work today, and the first homeowner's house is getting the basement dug out on Monday. So transformers are to be delivered around April, and they're actually thinking that they made by brand-new ones, and they'll be here at the same time so we can complete the work for power. Gas line was boarded in, that's what these steel plates on Dayton Avenue, or Dayton Street is. Center point directional board in the gas line from back in the plat all the way out to Dayton Street. They're also boarding in our power line this week as well, so we'll be able to feed that plat from Dayton Street. There was a mistake, it's the Housing Committee meeting is tomorrow from 10 to 12, which is March 5. Phase 2 sewer work, I've got that one covered. You have seen, if you've drove around, nine of the multimodal pass, brand-new ramps are being tore out. They did not pass the third-party inspection, and they failed by 1%, which is a quarter inch and four feet. And so they had to remove nine sections, they're hoping to get them tore out and record between this week and next week. So they were working on Dayton Street today, there's more barrels and cones sitting on Zingy Avenue right there by the library. So if you see concrete work, it's because they didn't pass the 1% grade, and that's literally a quarter inch and four, four feet. So Mary Ann McQueen sent me a thing, and I want to highlight it, in the water plant, March 20, and I'm looking at Ben at the same time, and probably you, March 20, there is a show at the Little Art Theater on, at 5 o'clock, it's called Water. Reserve your tickets. Our water plant has made that show. So, and actually, I watched the trailer, and actually wanted the water plant operators, it's the last thing on, Jeff Horn was the last one that they interviewed. So it's, it's what I seen of the trailer, it's a great, it'd be a great show. So March 20, 5 o'clock, Little Art Theater, is the showing for the show called Water. And it's got some of the history from the Dayton, they actually have a jar of water from the 1913 flood in Dayton. So my wife was not, I'm going out my wife. My wife was not interested until she was watching it in my office, she goes, all right, I'll go with you. She may be passionate about water now.
Gotcha. I hope so.
The vac truck, it was used for the storm outages, but I'm glad we got it repaired. They went in, they sucked out a bunch of stuff at the lift station. Just a reminder, don't flush grease. If you own a business in town, get your grease traps and separators checked. We had an enormous amount of grease that was slowing down the process. We have cleaned it out again, but we, we will probably be trying to work with the Health Department to try to figure out a way that we can inspect the grease traps in the businesses downtown. Brad has got the water quality report in for a draft to the Ohio EPA. Once it is approved, then we'll be sending it out and making sure that the public is aware of the quality of the water for 23. We started the ball diamonds today on, towing up the dirt at the baseball and the softball. They reached out today, they're gonna be reaching out to Samantha on getting the lights and figuring out what the cost to turn the lights on are. We have, we've reached out to the high school. Gavin, I sent you back the notes from everybody. We have some things to do out there, but right now, it's working, so we're fixing it as we can get them done. But last year was probably one of the better years, we did some grading on the baseball side of the diamonds, which diverted a lot of the water. So tanless meters, we have installed 350 of them that we had for 400, we're saving 50 back for the new plat as it gets built, before we start ordering the rest of them. We're gonna do another 400 coming up here pretty soon. The RFP for the water tanless system, remote meters that we got for the OPWC grant, the RFP goes out next week. So we're, we got about a 20-day turnaround on the RFP, and then I'll be bringing back the resolution that council to be able to approve the contractor and to get that project started. The funds are secured this year for the matching, we have 16%, it's like $70,000, $75,000 out of water and $75,000 out of sewer. The youth center, they didn't get a report, staff was out sick, so I didn't get a report from them, but Amani held down the fort while a couple of others were sick. Channel 5, we did not put it in our packet, but I will say, Ben's outstanding, worked during the storm, keeping people updated, play-by-play. He knew that Ben and I was busy, he was reaching out to Chief Burge, making sure that we was informed, and that was one of the highlights of the day, is when you see, and I only know this because Ben shared an email with me, because of our social media, the thank yous and the social media and the keeping the village informed on what was going on, was probably the best thing that we could have done. So we had very minimal complaints, and Ben, he was one of the first ones to call. I was talking to Chief Burge, Ben was actually talking to Ben to get it on social media, that power was out and we was en route to get it fixed. So again, we're gonna wait until March 18 to where we can thank everybody, and then it'd be a long list. So that is what I have, if you have any questions.
Well, yeah, I just want to thank you, and like everyone else has thanked you, yeah, I, I heard about all the, the social media traffic regarding all the good work that you all were doing, so kudos, kudos indeed.
So really quickly, on the, the housing meeting is not the, the meeting tomorrow is the Family Rental Stakeholders Meeting that Home Inc.
Correct.
Kind of put together. Our, the Managers Advisory Committee on Housing is later, right?
Correct. It is the 14th, and we may be having to change that. We'll stay tuned on that one.
Okay.
Go ahead, Gavin.
No, just, I know you sent me an email back, so just since you brought up the baseball thing and softball fields. So if somebody has a question about the baseball, this is more like a public service or?
Correct.
What's the best place for them to call to check in, to see, you know, hey, I want to help out with something at the baseball field? Who do you call?
Samantha Stewart. She is the, because she has a group interested in doing some work right now, and then she communicates with Tanner to try to make things happen.
So I wanted to underscore what you said about how powerful communication is. It reminds me of how much I appreciate the memo about the noise follow-up that we've done, and, you know, we've talked about, you know, how that makes all the difference with the community. I would suggest elevating Ben's work around the marketing of the CBE and your economic development piece, you know, on the top piece, because that's become significant. Not only are, you know, we're looking at a video, but we're looking at a PowerPoint and a story map, and so, but I think that's becoming a significant activity in that regard. And then, two things, one around water treatment. I really liked when we had that chart that was showing, and it's mentioned in the report, but about like what we're, what we're producing and what we're charging for. It was nice to be able to track that, and if we could bring that back, that would be great. And wastewater-wise, I saw the references to the EPA piece, and similarly, like, as much as we can stay updated on like our progress, so if we're not like, you know, if we resolve the solid stuff and all that, that's great, but it's nice just to know what's going on there, so, thanks.
I, I've got two things. First is, let me, let me back up, I did not put it in the report. I was able to talk to or emailed the US EPA. They are trying to collect some more information that was needed. They are trying to collect some more information that was needed on the history from Vernay's and then it will go into another review process that is on my calendar as a monthly reminder to be able to reach back out to them in Chicago. But I'm copying Carmen on them so we can stay on top of it. And I gave her a brief history of, I met you 10 years ago, I met you six years ago, and when are we going to get something done? So lastly, I did not do a good job last time and I, and I just overseen it. Me being a village manager, I want to thank council personally. Appreciate the vote of confidence, but I can't say thank you to my wife and my kids and family members for the support they've given me over the, my wife, 35 years, March 24th, and my kids being behind me the long nights, the long days, the long hours. But on top of that, my work, family here at work, I have one of the most amazing teams. Amy's part of the team, Judy, Paige, Meg, my guys in Public Works, all the police officers. Without their support, I would not be able to be sitting up here confident in the work that we're doing daily. We're an awesome team. We're going to keep moving forward, but I want to give a shout out to and thank you to the team, my wife, my kids, my family. And probably the one that I need to say thank you the most is a single mom of three kids that took in a foster kid, that worked three jobs night and day, that showed us what hard work and dedication meant and I owe a lot of thanks to my mom.
Beautiful.
Thanks Johnny.
Some of us are too soft for that kind of commentary and it causes our eyes to leak, so.
Next time.
Warning, facial tissue. Cool.
Amy's crying, Paige is laughing.
And past employees.
Man, now I want to ask about wastewater treatment and COVID.
Go ahead.
All right. I just, yeah, sorry, yeah, Kevin Downer. But I don't know, it, I guess, I do remember, it was a NPR podcast I was listening to while blowing leaves in my yard. And they talked about how important, I just really never considered how important wastewater treatment is to providing information about trends regarding COVID. I know the pandemic is over, but COVID is still around. I guess we haven't, I presume that Green County Health would be the source if something popped up, but.
It's actually on a report. So we do this on a weekly basis. We take three samples and if it is at a high range, they let us know in our wastewater. We test it every week. We send out tests. When we get it back, it's two weeks old, but if they tell us to advise because of what they've seen in the numbers, we did, we, we put it in a couple, and Brian went three months ago, but it was only the influenza A, it was a high. COVID's not had, been on the radar at all. So, but we do do that and it's in Brad's wastewater treatment plant report.
Yep. Yeah, I saw that and that's what made me think about it. It reminded me of the podcasts I listened to and, you know, I, in terms of preparing the community in advance of, you know, it being a big deal, it shows up in wastewater four to five days out. So that was news to me, good to know.
It's crazy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
One other quick thing. So how many poles went down?
Well, it depends, well, there's a total of nine. So there was five on Dayton Street.
Right.
And I'll just say, you got to say it because I always have been saying, Ben and I have been saying these poles were bad for 10 years.
Okay, so the status of those poles.
AT&amp;T is telling us different. If Ben and his team would not have changed one on one end and one on the other end, we had 20 to 25 down. But because they had good poles and you, we got pictures, the good poles moved about seven and a half inches. So those two poles kept us from multiple days outing. So we are reaching out to AT&amp;T. We are actually going to have them tagged next week as instant rejects and we are going to work with Amy Blankenship to write AT&amp;T a nice letter saying, you will change them out and we're done playing. Other than that, let me go back to why all the other ones are broke. It is crucial if you own property in this village, you maintain your own trees. We had no trees from the power lines and right-of-ways that affected any poles. It was all property owner trees. I understand the storm was bad, but we're talking about trees that have been dead for years. So, but we had a total of nine and five could have been prevented.
Interesting.
I want to add something really quickly since we're on the tree, the tree thing. When we, we had a conversation briefly the other day about this. I think that Environmental Commission, although we have a lot that we're taking on, should take some kind of initiative to educate people about tree care and maybe think about getting an arborist. I'm all about volunteers, I'm all about students. There's some naturalists somewhere who's, who is a dendrology major who loves trees, maybe at Hawking right now and they can, we can coordinate some kind of effort to educate people about the importance of if your tree's not healthy, it's still standing, it needs to come down. We know, and we know, I have some, you know, there's some trees that are hollow that need to, you know, that need to come down, but that's, it's, it's important.
The other thing that we have locally is the tree committee will come out and evaluate any tree.
Yeah, that's right.
So we, we need to make it a group effort to help the village in this time.
Yeah, I would just second that about the tree committee. I mean, I tried to salvage three ash trees for a while until it just was not, not the thing to do and the tree committee was, was instrumental in helping to bring about, you know, a good understanding of that.
Yeah, go ahead Gavin, I think.
You go. Okay. All right. Thank you Johnny for your managers report. All right. Old business, Chief Burge. All righty, come on, talk to us about the solar eclipse preparation.
We're excited.
We all are.
Has everyone got their glasses?
Yeah.
I got mine on yawns on leap day.
Ah, I missed that.
We're just to enjoy fun events from a fun perspective and public safety. Worst case scenario. Relaxing like I really can. So obviously you put the memo out with a lot of information in it. Things I just want to highlight and drive home are the concerns, which is going to be traffic and parking. Those are concerns every day in the Village of the Old Springs, right? It's going to be 10-fold, 20-fold come that weekend. Public sanitation, which we're obviously ahead of if you read through the entire memo. And then resource management. The 2017 eclipse impacted small villages and cities like ours worse than any other areas. They had no food, no gas, no, they didn't have proper sanitation facilities and it was just because they were ill-prepared. They didn't know any better. Fortunately, because they learned the lesson the hard way, we can get ahead of it. And so that's what this memo is about, is telling, showing you guys the actions that we've taken. Ben has put together an awesome website that is, I mean, super easy to use. It highlights all of the parking areas that we've partnered with local stakeholders, reached out to darn near everyone to say, hey, can we send folks your way? And if so, are you going to charge them? And if you're going to charge them, can we get on the same page? Really commit the community. Nobody pushed back on that. Everybody's on board with every, all the parking's going to be the same cost, which is awesome. So I do feel at this time we have ample parking resources. You go to his website, click on exactly where you want to park and just map quest you right to, right to that exact location. Anywhere there's parking, we're going to provide porta-potties that we were able to secure thanks to this guy's connections because those were hard to come by, like gold. And we have enlisted the help of about 15 food trucks specifically for Monday. Right now, we don't have plans to include them in weekend activities, but essentially the goal is come early, stay late. That's the EMA guidance. So that staggered exit and staggered come, our arrival of people will prevent that gridlock, will prevent that taxing of our resources and hopefully we can, you know, kind of control that. But if we can't, as I said, I'm always a worst-case scenarioist. Myself and Chief Powell have already planned to have together traffic mitigation plans, making sure that we can clear up our arterial routes and as well as an incident response plan in the event something more catastrophic might occur. So if you guys have questions or concerns that weren't addressed in the memo?
Yeah, just something just came to mind. Thank you for the memo and thank you for the great presentation. Should residents change their behavior in terms of street parking, for example, if, if they're able to?
Yes, that's a great call out. So we've had some discussion and Chief Powell and I are on the same page that we already believe that we are going to, we haven't officially announced it because it's not solidified, but we believe that we are going to prevent parking on Dayton and Zinyah from, what did we settle on? Was it 10?
I think it was 10, 10 AM to?
To, to 3 PM or 4 PM, just after the eclipse actually ends. And as tough as I know that is on, on the businesses, I mean, we certainly don't want to, they're not going to have any issue with business on this day, I assure you of that. But those are our main routes, so if we do have to switch gears from, hey, everything's working as we expected to, it's not working and we need to get these people moving. We can open up those arterial routes quickly without any issue. But speaking to residents, even on their onside streets or local streets, yes, if they have another option, another area to park, like a driveway, I would highly recommend doing so.
Great, good. Yeah, go ahead.
So is the website that was mentioned, is that public?
It is, absolutely.
Okay, what's the web address?
We're posting it on YSO.com. The reason we haven't done that yet is because we were waiting on maps that one of our local business members were putting together for us. So that should be linked tomorrow, you think, to our YSO website so that you can just click there. All the stakeholders that have been involved in this as well, so the schools, the local businesses, et cetera, they're also going to have that link so that everyone can just go to the same place. They're not going to, let me check the chamber out. Let me check the, they're going to one place for all the information and that will be, that will be available. We'll make sure we share it on social media, Channel 5 and.
So I think, yeah, to me that's important, especially when we think about like some of these potential like parking, close downs or whatever that we're coordinating with everyone. How many portageons do we usually have for street fair?
We get, we order the exact amount that we order for street fair.
Okay, so 100.
And quite, we order more? Oh, okay, good for you. Good job. I thought, I'm sorry.
65 is normal street fair. We have 100.
Yeah, we got 100, which was, again, that was very difficult to do.
All right. And then the other thing is, I know Samantha reached out to me about Ellis Pond and bike parking. So what did you guys decide about that?
So we were hoping that some, somebody who has, you know, connections with the cyclist community would be able to put together some type of bike parking. Ellis Pond seemed like a great place because the usual places we set up are going to be more congested than usual. So just like we're, we're going to have more pedestrians, more vehicles, we're going to have more cyclists as well.
So that's still in the mix?
Yes, that's still in the mix, absolutely, yes.
And so I did share with Samantha, we've got three resources for the bike racks and I, I love Ellis Park just because.
Perfect, yeah, it's right there.
We got that spur.
And we plan to leave porta-potties there as well so that folks can have a place to.
Because it seems like that also needs to be, yeah, on the.
Advertised? Yes, and it will be. I don't think, Johnny mentioned this several times, Sam was out sick last week, so some of the things that were on her plate just haven't gotten, made their way to the website, so.
Cool.
Excellent. Any other questions for Chief? All right, Chief, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Worst-case scenario. I love it. All right. Well, housing committee update, we've got Meg and Gavin. Well, let's see, did I say the right name?
I thought maybe Gavin would give an overview of kind of where we're at right now, but you're not ready.
I mean, we talked, I'm happy to do, either way.
Yeah.
Do you want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay. The, the short version is, is that the storm has, we need a little more time. At the last housing committee meeting, we talked about the prospect of trying to essentially close the gap on capacity of sort of current staff resources, the capacity needed to actually move, you know, housing, you know, initiatives in a significant way. So the, whether that's hiring or contracting or reorganizing current staff in ways to fill that capacity, but that there's a gap. And we had expected to have some more time to work on that before this meeting and that changed. So we basically need a little more time. But that's the, that's like the thing that's coming. And so we need to do some analysis on it. And I say we, like I'm going to do a bunch, but really.
It's really, it's. I think I seen Meg about maybe an hour and a half last week, so.
Right. Two weeks, three weeks, something like that.
We didn't get to it and I actually called Gavin between meetings today with Meg and said, listen, we need more time. So it's reason one, we're kind of, we want to make sure that we're doing the right things and we get the right thing managed and brought out to the next meeting.
And there's kind of two things going on simultaneously too, but with the Home Inc. effort going on, just to be like putting an underscore under the differences, the housing community is a little bit broader in its overall purpose and mission, but then the goals for this last, this year were specific to develop specific property, village-owned property with housing. But what Home Inc. is doing is specific to what we call low-income housing tax credit, identifying a property within the village to use that funding source. Not that the housing community wouldn't potentially identify that, but it's been a little bit broader. Where Home Inc. is leading this other effort that has the meeting tomorrow, we're, staff will be there and we'll be providing like facts and information from our zoning code and from that, from utilities and stuff, but it's their own effort and the housing committee is kind of doing a separate housing effort as well. So we're running simultaneously and I know there's going to be a lot of people in the community talking about it, so I just thought it would be good to talk about how there's two different. Emily's invited, school, school board representatives and YSTC and.
St. Mary's will be there.
St. Mary's will be there and.
YSTC, it's a great list. And I, you know, and that came out of the housing committee. I mean, that was one of the things we asked Home Inc. to take the lead on that.
Yeah, and we're, staff supporting it too.
Were you going to say something?
Just that, I don't think that, not saying that, I'm against that, I just thought it would be good to clarify.
Yeah. Okay. So since, you know, it was mentioned that there's going to be potentially this ask for money for support for this activity, which I'm not opposed to, I want to go back to something I mentioned at the retreat that I think would help address what Johnny said about like getting what we need. I think it's really important to, and this, this effort was kind of started, you know, with like listing the village-owned properties, but I think we need some clarity on what site prep looks like for, you know, Corey Street, Glass Farm, whatever. So to me, that's like one column, what our goals are around like housing mix and whatnot and then, what else do we have right here? And then resources we have, you know, whether that's, you know, people, organizations, funding. But I guess for me anyway, before I approve any spending, I think we need to do some of that analysis and I don't think that's very difficult to do. I mean, Johnny knows what the site prep needs to be. We have a Bowen housing study and a lot of like focus on affordable housing. And again, we know, you know, some of the resources we have and I'm sure we can brainstorm others, but I'd like to see something like that come to council in a next update. And so I, I don't feel like that's a heavy lift, but you know, maybe I'm wrong.
I think we kind of already have that, at least the site identification, Corey, Glass and, and then there was something, some.
Railroad.
Railroad, but then we.
And we can also expand Lawson.
And then, yeah, and then we have, we have that somewhere, don't we? And then what?
We do, we have a list of them.
Yeah.
And what each one costs.
And then really quickly, I'm, I'm doing this for me, but me, not just for me, but so we have that. And then, so if I'm understanding correctly, what we need in addition to that is where we are as far as infrastructure is concerned, but I think that we have a loose idea about that or do we get a memo about that?
I'll firm it all up, but yes, I do have ideals of where the infrastructure is, what I think it's going to cost.
On what side, on, on each site?
On two sites.
Okay.
But what we saw was, you know, also kind of like a weird prioritization of those things, which I'm not recommending to, you know, conclude that, so. which I'm not recommending to, you know, conclude that, so.
I guess, I think what, everything you said is definitely possible, it's just the timeframe. So when you say the next update, you mean the next council meeting?
Well, I guess, you know, again, if we're talking about like funding, you know, to support that activity...
Yeah.
To me, that's like a minimum, I mean, it's kind of in line with the smart goals thing or whatever, yeah, so, but when that happens, you know, yeah.
Right, I think that, I think we're all on the same page with that aspect, that all that information's needed, but they just, at the last, the Housing Committee meeting, when that, and the position and different resource, additional resources for housing was brought up, that was the first time we even like considered it. And then all this, you know, Johnny still wasn't village manager, and, you know, we weren't sure who was going to be village manager, I mean, just a lot of different things have happened really quickly since then.
Yep.
And then the storm, and so I think we want to present something that's fully baked for you guys before you think about using additional funds for additional staff. And we want to, too, spend the time to think about it and make sure that we're committing to something, especially if it's an employee, that will be full-time, that can be longevity of it, would be full-time, too, so we won't just hire someone and then what happens when we don't have work for them supposedly? I don't think that would ever happen, I really don't, with what I've seen here, the amount of work, but we want to flesh it out fully. With him as being village manager, it's also coinciding that with all of his goals and ideas for the department, the village in overall, too, and making sure we're taking that into consideration. So there's just a lot of moving parts, and we don't want to just jump so fast. That's the only reason I hesitate on saying, you know, next meeting, can't 100% fully commit to that, because when I say something, I like to fully commit to it.
Right, right.
But we'll try, that's something.
Yeah. Sorry if I like, you know, I didn't mean to say next meeting, but I just meant to say, if there's a proposal about the funding, then we should do a little bit of like pre-work on that, so.
Yeah, and I'm glad we got the next meeting thing, because I was going to push back on that, only because I understand the Housing Committee, you know, we got tomorrow, then Housing Committee is going to...
Tentatively on the 14th.
Right, which might move, you know, so, so I, that's why I didn't want to commit to like to the next meeting based on the stuff I've already heard, but, but certainly the commitment is there to get the information as soon as possible. And, you know, if it happens next meeting, so, but I suspect it'll be after the next Housing Committee meeting, which is TBD.
Right now, a little bit in flux, too, so, yeah. A lot of moving parts.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Meg and Gavin? No? Good.
Can I go back to manager's report, not for the village, but I want to make council and the villagers aware of Agraria's bike path started today. They are moving forward, they've hired a contractor, you will see some things being cleared, some trees, but Mary's Way is a go, contractor started on it today, so you'll see them clearing the path. The other thing is, is I know that the Glens has secured or is in the process of securing the same contractor won all of the projects that the Glens had, so you'll see the same contractor working in multiple areas. I just want to let you guys know that Mary's Way was awarded, and we was able to sign off on what we needed to sign off of, we found the lease for Agraria, so they got everything that they needed, so we did not hold them up on anything.
Nice. And Johnny, since you brought that up, are you tracking what the schools are looking to do? I mentioned that thing about them extending the parking out there. We can talk about it offline, but, yeah, but there were some issues with folks across the street, and so, based on what they're looking at, there's going to be ample parking for people that want to get on Mary's Way.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, sounds good. Okay, now I'm done.
Okay, you sure?
I'll be quiet.
We can come back to manager's report again, we got, we got, we got two hours, it's not really 11 o'clock yet.
No, it's 11 o'clock.
Yeah. Okay, so new business, there's council procedures that I'm responsible for. I think this bubbled up to the top as maybe part of our annual, kick the year off, remind ourselves of who we are and how we ought to behave. There was some conversation about the fact that it's an ordinance, should it have been maybe a resolution, so it's less of a heavy lift, but I don't think there's any reason to change that. What I would say to council is, I'm asking each of us to thoroughly go through the council procedures that's presented in the packet, the, Brian, you alluded to the initiative proposal, I'd like for us to really look at that. There are a few things, modifications to the procedures that I have in mind, but I'd like for that to be part of a larger effort, and so if we could all take a look at that in detail and propose ideas or thoughts or questions, if there's questions about clarity, I think we want to deal with those, I won't, it doesn't matter the thoughts I have, because I want to think about them some more, but I, but I do have some definite thoughts that I'd like for us to take advantage of. You know, these efforts pop up for a reason. This case, I think it's mainly the beginning of the year, we just haven't nailed anything down about any changes, but we've been talking about it for the last couple of meetings. But there are some things that I've wanted to highlight in terms of our procedures and our interactions with and amongst each other. So I'm asking each of us to do a deep dive on this and submit thoughts, questions, WTFs to Judy, so that we can have the best document. Then once we've got all that gathered, you know, then we can talk about it, and I think we ought to talk about it. I don't think we need to have a retreat kind of thing, but we can talk about that. I think if we find a few things, I think we can talk about them here at the table and work our way through them and decide to make changes and move forward. But there's certainly some things that I'm interested in considering, and I'm asking you all to do the same. Any questions? Okay?
I mean, to me, I think it's a really solid document, I mean, we did a lot of work on it two years ago. But I did mention to Judy that I think wherever we see his or her, we should replace that with their. Something Kate Hamilton mentioned like several years back, so whenever we catch those things and we're updating things, I think that's a best practice for us.
Well, but that doesn't let you off the hook in terms of your, any more commitments, any changes, but thank you for that.
Well, I mean, besides like giving a cart blog, you know, complaints, I mean, I read it very carefully, because I, I thought there were some changes, but then, you know, Judy, like, you know, so I, yeah.
Like I said, I think the calendar allowed it to bubble to the top, and when that occurred, thoughts of changes occur, but there was nothing that I'm prepared to express at this time, because I don't want to be, I think it should be a group effort, and if I'm the only one with changes, so be it, but, and it's nothing major. But I think it's just whatever we can do, each of you all is smarter than I am, so I'm sure you can come up with some piece that maybe could be improved. You know, in fact, so at the end of the day, it's about, it's about agency, I want each of us to, I'm not asking you to swear on the Bible, you know, but to have agency in this document, so that we are all on the same page in terms of how we interact with each other, so that issues of concern are reduced or eliminated, and if and when they do occur, if someone brings something to our attention, we would anticipate that based on our familiarity with the document. Okay? All righty, so I'm going to give you all back five minutes, I think. Are there any other questions or concerns about that? Anyone?
I would just say if you do have them, if you can just send them to me, and I'll keep a running tally, if there aren't very many, I'll just go ahead and create a redline.
Yep.
If there are, I'll make sure it's coherent.
Okay, we copy that? Great. All right, thanks. So that being the end of, yes, yes, yes.
So should there be a deadline for that? Like, what are we, were you trying to get this in the mix?
Let's, let's, I mean, there's so much happening in between now and now, but let's go ahead and shoot for tentatively, comments to Judy within the next four business days, four or five business days?
If I got them by the Wednesday before the next meeting, I'm good, I'm good, I will have time to deal with them, so.
Okay, okay, so to Judy by next Wednesday?
13.
13? Yep, thanks Gavin.
So are we talking about future agenda items?
Yes.
So I guess I'm going to go back to, I honestly thought like exploring inclusionary zoning was a no-brainer, so I didn't think it needed to be an agenda item, but I'm going to ask that it is, and I'd like, you know, whatever questions, concerns people have to be brought forward, but I think that segue is nicely into what I understand Meg is trying to do with planning commission, Gavin, you know more about this than I do, but, you know, I mean, that was Susan's memo, I just tried to smart-ize it or whatever, you know, for our, you know, what we're trying to do. And so, yeah, so I guess, but, you know, planning commission, their goal is to help us achieve our goals, and I think it combines with the Neighbors for More Neighbors activity, I liked what Matt put into the package at this time, so anyway, so I think we need to decide if we're going to try to pursue, you know, more, I guess, upzoning kind of activities or not, so.
So certainly, I support a discussion of the item for our next meeting, and I wrote Village Cafe.
Oh, yeah, so Lynn, you know, said he could come present if we want, so.
Okay, so we'll just, will you follow up with?
I think it's up to you guys in agenda planning, if you want a space for that.
Not a problem, Judy, please make note. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I had down the inclusion, before any of this discussion, just seeing it in the packet, I had it down as a future agenda item, and I guess, it sounds like, so we have the memo here that was in the packet, I guess, if, if there are like particular things that people need, then let us know, so we can figure out like if we need to, you know, invite Susan to come, or if there's other, you know, things. The only other pieces, after having seen the report from the livable equitable, is there another word, yellow springs?
Age-friendly.
Age-friendly, yellow springs.
Leaf.
Right, leaf, okay, there, that's easier, leaf. I don't know how y'all felt about it, but I thought it was, the, the action plan was interesting in that it sort of, it, you know, just clearly documents several of the major, you know, demographic trends in the village. So I know it was in announcements today, but I was, I was wondering if folks would be open to having like a longer conversation about what some of those dynamics are and how they're, you know, how they're, how they're playing out, and then there are several of those things that are also, like the village is listed as a primary driver on, so I could imagine hearing more about what we're, you know, acting on. So I don't know, I read that and thought, oh, I'd actually like to have some discussion about it, hear how other people received it, as opposed to just doing an announcement, so that was a topic to throw out.
So would that be something that you would want to see as an agenda item, or is this a kind of, a larger conversation that can take place with a couple of council members and leaf, or what are you, what are you thinking?
I was, I was thinking of, you know, that we would ask...
It was Tony that was here.
You know, Tony to come back, and I was thinking about it as like a 20 or 30-minute agenda item, assuming that we're having, you know, straightforward agendas where there's enough time to have that kind of conversation without, you know, being a longer thing, but just enough time to be able to reflect upon it as a group.
Yeah, what are you thinking about Carmen?
Well, I think that, I think that all the information that we need is in the packet, and I think that individually, we should have convers, I mean, a conversation with, if you want to have a conversation with Tony, I, a 20 or 30-minute agenda item for information that's pretty readily available and for people and for a group that's readily available to communicate with, I don't, I don't, I don't know what, I don't want to say I don't know, I don't know, that just seems like an awful long time to have a conversation that could be a private conversation with people that are open to meeting. And, but, you know...
So, the, just to give you a sense, the, what I'm trying to get a sense of is, so for, like essentially, I'm trying to understand where other council members are on these questions.
All right, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's a 20 or 30-minute agenda item thing.
Okay, I'm just trying to avoid the situation where we end up where we have a big, complex topic, like, you know, how are we addressing our median age going up consistently for decades, or how are we addressing, it's not like a five-minute thing where we're, so as long as, I, that's all, I just want to be able, get a sense of where folks are.
I'm with you, so Gavin, what I'm proposing is that, it's interesting, they just happen to be husband and wife, that you and I get together, and I was going to, and I was asking, looking to Brian, because it's, the whole consortium is inclusive, resilient, yellow springs, which I'm a part of, livable, equitable, age-friendly, which Brian is a part of, so we don't want to get all of us in, but I know you are concerned about particular things, Gavin, and I want to support you in that, so why don't we, in the meantime, let's make it an agenda item that we'll, we'll talk about, but let's you and I get with Tony and Lynn and try to think about how we could capsulize, either, either taking a portion, you know, of the, the work that's been done or planned, and try to just take a small bite of it, a small enough bite of it, that we can have a broader conversation about publicly, as opposed to trying to look at all of what they're...
And so I think that's kind of what's, you know, as I hear, you know, because I agree with Carmen, like, I mean, these things, same things come up from Village Cafe, from like, you know, the report out from leaf and whatnot, I think there are some great things there, and as we like, I think are going down this path of strategic planning, like, I want to process some of that stuff. You know, one of the things that's interesting to me is, in their initial report, they indicated that solving motorcycle noise was an easy thing. They had like an easy, medium, and hard level, and I'm like, we've never been able to figure out how to like reduce motorcycle noise, and probably never will. So I guess, you know, I like the idea of some kind of combination of what do we want to tackle, but also some offline work, like what I think Carmen's saying, get it to process, how does that work into our initiative, so.
And also, I, Brian used this term constantly, which was adding value, adding capacity, and so if council's simply bringing in the work and adding it to the council agenda, it's not adding capacity, it's adding capacity when they come in, give a teaser, let folks know what's going on over there, and then go over there if you want the firsthand information about what's being done, because things are being taken care of and done by other segments of the community, and that's a good thing. It doesn't have to come back for council...
Yeah, we have, we have a significant amount of resources that we can, you know, we can put toward addressing some of these things, so I'm just trying to get a sense of which of these things...
Right.
...do people care about, and that's all. I hear, I understand.
Where's the comment? I, I know I read it, but I don't know where it is. Where did I read that Lynn Kramer was coming?
So it was in the report from Diane.
Okay.
So, I mean, we didn't actually decide that that was happening, but Lynn reached out to Carmen, and, you know, he said, not this meeting, maybe the 18th, and so it's really more of a decision from council if, if we want that report out, but he's available on the 18th to report out on Village Cafe, so.
Okay. Was there enough, Gavin, in terms of the items that you're trying to highlight, and I think you were at Village Cafe, were you not?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you think having Lynn come and do the overview is, is a gateway, if you will, for a conversation, if we just allow enough time?
Sure, I mean, sure.
So if nothing else, it can start the conversation, just like he'll... So if nothing else, it can start the conversation, just like he'll, Lynn will, and we can talk to Lynn about what he presents as well, but he'll come to present the facts, for the, for the most part, and, and let's, let's talk about what, what, what part of that is a springboard until the next, next set of action. Okay? All right. So, Brian, you or I can reach out to Lynn, I mean, I'm, I, okay, I'll take, I'll take that.
Yeah.
To confirm.
Reconnected as well.
You got it, you got it.
I just wanted it to go through the proper channels, so it was asked, Diane was gonna set it up, I'm like, "Nah, nah, nah, go through the channels," so once Carmen's contacted it, then I can do it.
All right, well, good, good on the, "No, no, no," we like that, that was good, appreciate that. All right, anything else? And I don't wanna belabor the point, the next agenda is a leaving, living document, so it's moving and growing as we speak, so we don't need to solve world hunger tonight.
So storm report will go on there, Home Inc. annual report, sunshine primer, we only need about 15 minutes for that, we can talk about it. And then broadband update, are we keeping it on, taking it off?
When are we meeting, or do we know that?
We are, Eric is trying to set up a meeting with you and Brian for the week of, I believe, next week, and then we're meeting March 19th.
Yeah, so we're not ready for the next meeting.
Okay, April 1st, just moved to print.
Okay. But we'll, we'll meet next week.
Brian and you will, we're trying to set, Eric is working on setting up an appointment with you.
But maybe that provides some room to start talking about strategic planning, so, I mean, you guys think about if we have room on the agenda, but, yeah.
Yeah, Gavin and I have been talking about what, what that could look like in terms of the preparation and execution for a good strategic planning effort. So, all right, things to do, things to do. Okay. I think we've done enough, Judy, thank you for your review of that. If there's nothing else pressing for the good of the order, I will entertain a...
Some, a second.
Maybe an EC update, 'cause we got stuff happening.
Okay.
Is she not on there for that? Oh, no, 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 that's not true, never mind, never mind, you're fine, don't do it. But there's just, there's just, we already did that, but there's a new thing happening, but I think I can just...
But you've got boards and commissions next time, so, yeah.
Then, then if...
Glad you're here, Judy.
Then if needed. We've got a motion.
Oh, yes.
Second.
All right, to adjourn, yeah, 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 'cause I...
Oh, those in favor.
Yeah, 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 right, thanks.
All right, thanks, everyone.
We are adjourned by, I wanna say that one day.